I'd like to.
All right, everybody get a grip. We're gonna start our council meeting. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
The motion.
By Mr. Lawrence, by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. If the clerk would read those changes, please.
To the policy agenda, we're substituting for A, Exhibit A only, for the ordinance to amend Section 1512 for the compensation schedule.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
A motion.
By Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's a unanimous vote. Brings us to the mayor's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Mr. Frisbee to the last meeting since you had a whole crowd here today, so.
You're glad you came.
Anyway, let me know if you want me to do anything today.
I'm here to come.
Yeah, that's right. All right. Last meeting of the year. Okay.
It's a short meeting, so I just want a chance to educate the rest of the council on the situation with police and fire vacancies. I'll start with the fire department. We've got 11 new firefighters.
All right. Woo!
So, tell me.
That's good.
Tell them where they are.
All right. So, yes, we got 11 new. Well, actually, we started with 12. One of them didn't make it, but that was state side of things, not our requirements. So, the 11, out of the 11, we had three come from other departments. One of them was certified fire and EMT, so he's good to go. The other 10, they are all certified up. They're on the trucks. They're helping out with the overtime issue. They will start EMT class starting January 17th, and that is a shift-based class that we do in-house. Saves us a ton of money. All that we have to do is buy the books and pay for their National Registry, which runs about $98 per person. But, other than that, they're good to go, and everybody's doing well from all reports.
Well, Chief Miller, update you on the police and situation with their vacancies.
All right, so we have two new policemen and hopefully a third new policeman on Thursday. Then we have 10 in the pipeline. That's 10 that passed everything except the interview. They've got the interview to go through. We'll do that right after the first. Hopefully, all 10 of those will pass the interview, and that'll be 10 new policemen we can add to the force. We have two new dispatchers and two new front desk clerks and one new intel analyst. So, we're looking pretty good. That'll leave us with, if we hire all 10 of these, that'll leave us with about 10 or 12 positions still vacant, and we'll be working on those now.
Mr. Demming had a question or comment.
Chiefs of both fire and police, just out of curiosity, these new applicants or positions that are being filled, do you know, were they a relationship to the increase in pay, or is this just something that was gonna happen regardless? And then, it's not of any importance. I'm just curious.
Yes, that's difficult. That's difficult to say. I know the dispatchers were due to pay. The officers, some of those were already in the pipeline. Probably with the police department, the increase in pay will stop a couple that were planning on leaving for better pay. It'll probably stop them from leaving.
So, ours were already in the pipeline before all this kind of came up, so we're hoping to see, now that we've got the, Chief Davis is the one that's handling our hiring process now, and now that we can do a monthly or every other month setup, we're expecting to see more applicants.
No, that's good. I mean, if we're getting them, I mean, working for Biloxi is still the best on the coast, right? And so, those raises are gonna help us with retention and even incentivize other people to come over. But I was just curious to know these current ones, but thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Mr. Lawrence had a question or a comment.
Does that put it back at the level we need to be? Are we still short on patrolman and fireman?
So, currently, we are at two vacancies with about another two or three that we know are coming up. They're getting their numbers for the state. So, we'll probably, next time hiring, we'll probably need about four or five opens.
So, the 10 that are in the pipeline, if all 10 of those pass and we hire all 10, that'll leave us with, I believe it's 12 or 13 vacant positions in patrol.
Wow. Thank you. Let me add a little bit to that, you know, as far as the adjustments that we had talked about. I think they'll both agree that's not gonna hurt. And if you look at the propaganda from other PDs and other fire departments, you know, they don't really, they give you a number, and the number doesn't tell you the whole story. Chief, when you look at the whole package, we've got the, there's no question, at least in my mind, that we have the best, but you gotta be within a few dollars of that dollar in order to pitch the benefits that you have. You know, you're talking like $12,000 worth of, if you're in a family mode with insurance, it's valued $12,850 bucks. You can't compete aggressively, so you gotta have the dollars at least within, you know, a percent or two to move forward. But I think we're competitive now.
We're very competitive now. What you have to keep in mind is that younger people coming in, they're not interested in insurance. They're looking at that bottom dollar line amount. That's what we, that's what the mayor was able to get up for us. That's right. They're looking at money and what that, how much money they can make. In a couple of years from now, a few years from now, I'm sure that some will be looking at insurance, but right now, it's that base in the door pay. That's what they're looking at.
And I think it seems to be working.
It is working.
Yeah. Well, that's all I think I have, other than, I think it's two minutes left in the third quarter. University of Houston is losing to Auburn 10 to 3, 13, excuse, 13 to 10.
Should we have a moment of silence for that?
Yeah. Game's not over yet.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Guines. Thank you, Chief Miller. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Leonard. That brings us to council reports, starting with Mr. Lawrence.
A question to the mayor, Jerry Creel, in Florida, when they had a condominium that collapsed, they're kind of rearranging and changing the recommendation, how the bill condominiums. Have we looked into following up with something like that for down here?
Structurally.
State of Florida and the state of North Carolina have always had their own building codes. They don't adopt the international building code like we do. Our codes are very stringent already. You know, we've also, the council also voted to adopt the high wind code, which requires going above and beyond what the regular building code does, so we've already done what's necessary to make sure that our buildings are safe. And, of course, most of these buildings are designed by structural engineers, and when they're in the wind zone, they have to meet higher wind restrictions. I'm not sure what the cause was of that building collapsing, but my guess would be that when everything is said and done on that, they're gonna find out that it had something to do with the pilings, some error or some faulty mechanism in the pilings not being driven deep enough. That would be my guess.
I was just hoping that we'd upgrade, make it better. And as far as the structure engineer, I hope they're not the same ones that screwed all the streets up in Biloxi. The engineers in Biloxi took the wrong side like that, why they dropped the city two feet? Wrong. It was a mistake. Anybody in Biloxi can tell you it was a mistake, but the engineers, they passed the lawyers. They're being bad. Make even, they make Mike look good and Pete over there. Engineers have, this is, the contracts we have, when we get a new contract with an engineer, I want somebody to make sure they check it, because I'm not voting on anything until somebody proves to me what they're doing right. They make too many mistakes, and all that is to change order, change order, and a ton of money. And they know what they're doing when they do all that. Like 12 sewer covers on Seal Avenue. Give me a break. You know, these are mistakes they make to create money changes. So, anyway, we need to have, you know, we got a man over there. He'll take care of it. You got the word now, Mike? You can straighten this bunch out, because it's bad what they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines?
First of all, just wanted to, let's see, what did I have in my mind? I don't know. Just wish everybody a happy new year. I think the.
Mr. Frisbee, he's the only one here.
Oh, Mr. Frisbee? Yeah, okay, yeah.
He's the only one here.
Happy new year, Mr. Frisbee.
Playing too.
Yeah. Happy new year. I think the, I think a lot of the workers and people were very grateful for the raises. I think that's done a wealth of good for the city of Biloxi and especially for our employees with morale. And, you know, of course, in the future, we want to look at some others that are probably rightfully needing it. On top of that, listening to the news, the gaming revenue was just great. You know, the city of Biloxi has done well with gaming. But, other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy new year, and let's have another prosperous year like we did this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman?
Jerry, I keep getting asked, could you give us a quick update on the Bertuzzi property and the Broadwater property?
The latest thing that we have on the Bertuzzi property is that they're moving forward with that Phase 1. Now, we're waiting on Dennis Stiefel to provide us with the designs for the infrastructure to go into that part, and with the road improvements, you know, that were proposed. So, really, it's in their hands right now. I can call and check on that and get an update to see if they're any further along than the last time we talked.
Please.
As far as the Broadwater goes, I talked to one of the owners last week, Tom Aberdancy, and he told me that there should be a major announcement coming in the next few weeks. So, have we received any plans or anything? No, we haven't gotten any of that yet, but according to him, there will be a major announcement.
Perfect.
Okay.
And happy new year.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Demming?
I don't have much to report, but, Mr. Mayor, Mike, we need to discuss, I think we'll need to discuss the West Biloxi Infrastructure Program Plan, whatever we need to do for all of the drainage in West Biloxi, the old dilapidated underground concrete work that is failing. I mean, we have sinkholes everywhere, so I would like to get a commitment from you guys to make that a priority so we can really put together a plan, a long-term comprehensive plan for how we're gonna address this moving forward. The Bertuzzi property. Isn't that my ward now?
Whatever.
I mean, they can still call you, and you can just.
I know they will.
I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's our last meeting of the year, and, you know, it's been a good one. Hasn't been easy, but the directors and the mayor and everyone's been working hard to do their best and get through a lot of adversity and just show that willpower that Biloxians have. So, I hope everybody had a great Christmas and got to share it with family. I got an opportunity to go out with some 10-year-olds and ring the bell and raise some money for Salvation Army, and those kids worked their butts off for about four hours to get that money raised, and it was a record. I think they doubled what they did last year. They raised like $800 last year. They ended up raising $1,600. I didn't get it on video, but to see 10-year-olds line up, four or five of them, and start singing, you talk about people throwing that money in that bucket left and right, so that there's a little magic there of Christmas, and those little hearts were working hard. And we gotta work even harder this coming up year. Couple other things. In my ward by Cedar Lake Bridge, and I mentioned it to Director Creel, there's a private road the residents wish to see if the city can possibly take that road over. And in addition to that, there's no utility, city utilities. They're on well. They don't, they're not on city services, and they would like us to explore, seeing if, what it would take to kind of get them connected to water and sewer from the city. It's Road 526, I think it is. If we could look into that, that would be marvelous. Want to thank our CAO. There was a couple incidents with some lighting. I know you're on it, and I updated the residents. They got a couple calls the last couple of days, and I told them, listen, I got emails that we're working on it. We're gonna get to you. So, I appreciate that. I really do. I know you got a lot of stuff to cover, and these little things are big things when you add them all up. So, I really, really, really appreciate that. I'd like to see where we are with the sports plaques. I know they did a survey of that area. Is that coming up soon for maybe an update?
Yeah. I think they did.
Mashada and Patana Mayor?
Well, they got some probably American pants.
Get them in in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we'll get them in a week or so.
Okay.
Plan on that.
Appreciate that. That'll be exciting news as well. And that concludes my report. Oh, I got, I do have one more thing I just want to mention. This is a sad note during Christmas. She lost her husband back in July. Sherry Mazzara Valmuth passed away, and I'd like if we will consider closing this meeting in memorandum of Sherry Mazzara Valmuth. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Barrett?
Yes, I wasn't here last week, so I'd like to, I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas. Wish everyone a Happy New Year. Also, I have a road that someone has contacted me about, and I guess it's one of those deals where they're being told that it's not a city road, but in the past, they were told that it is. It's North Oaklawn Lane, and I know that part of that road is paved, but there's a part of it that's never been paved before. And so, I want, if we can get some kind of verification as, you know, to be sure if that's a city road or not a city road, and if it is, look into getting, it's just a short stretch that needs to be paved, but if it is city property or city road, look into getting that paved. Also, we're, it's North Oaklawn Lane. There's about five or six Oaklawn, so I'm not even exactly sure. I think North Oaklawn Lane is right in behind our, by our Guelles', right by the interstate. You go down, there's that tractor Kabota place. I think that's North Oaklawn Lane right there. It's at the very end of that. There's a portion that's not paved, and the guy that lives there says that in the past, he was told a city road, and then he's been told it's not. And so, if we can get some clarification on that, and then if it is, you know, try to get that small section paved for them. And then, after the first of the year, I'd like to see the, we had the workshop. We've talked it out. I'd like to see that agenda on the firework ordinance get back, put back on so that before July, it's set in stone, we're done with it, and it's not something that we're still beating around the bush, you know. Come July, we have, you know, there's new things in place. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I have just a couple of things. One, I've just noticed a lot of litter in the city, not just in my ward, but the Long Pass Road, just in probably heavily trafficked intersections and stuff. It's an ongoing problem. It just really looks. Sorry.
The problem is the litterers, not the litter. We'll pick up the litter.
I know. Lester Maddox, well, we wouldn't have such a bad prison system if you'd, you know, if you'd send me better prisoners. I get that. The other, second thing is, I would encourage the administration to follow up, just ear-to-the-ground kind of thing with employees dealing with insurance and pharma issues. And Mr. Leonard and I had spoken briefly about it.
I just got off the phone with Cy Easterling just before we came in here. The first question I asked him is, what's the volume of calls that you're getting? Robin, his lady that handles those calls, said it averages 10 to 12 a week, but that the majority of those calls at this point are one subject, and the subject has to do with the turnover, our passover of the deductible from the old insurance to the new insurance, which, in which cases, from Blue Cross to the new insurance. And that problem is gonna go away the 1st of January, because on 1st of January, everybody resets back to zero. So, and they, there were some legitimate mistakes and the transfer from the other insurance of the deductible. So, somebody thinks that they're gonna get a, they go to the drugstore, and there's gonna be no co-pay, and they show up, and there's a co-pay. Then they have to question that, and then you find out, oh, they didn't, the deductible didn't transfer over, and then that gets corrected and so forth. So, they think that the majority of the problems, questions that are being asked today will go away on the 1st of January with the reset. But he agreed, if we could set up a schedule, to start going around to the departments and say, put in two hours at Public Works and two hours at Engineering and two hours at the Fire Department, two hours at Police, and let people come in and ask questions and do some education of the workforce. And we'll try and set that up this month, this next month.
Outstanding. I'd appreciate that. I think the biggest issue is that some employees, from what I gather, don't know necessarily who to call or they're, and if they call Maestro or proactive, third-party administrator or the pharmaceuticals, excuse me, they're not sure who they talk with, and they may not talk to the same person. They may be on the phone waiting for, so it's just communication-type issues. But anything we can do to get accurate information in a timely manner to our employees, so they know what to do if they have an issue, to get it resolved, I think would be helpful. That, and some of the calls that I've received dealt with pharmaceutical issues generally, filling scripts, usually for child, usually diabetes-related, whatever, and the cost involved. And until that's cleared up, how am I gonna pay for this medication, which I used to get, sent to me like clockwork? So, I know these are transition issues, but as long as we can get accurate information in a timely manner to employees, to help them get their issues resolved, I think we'd all be better served. And let me know when you line those meetings up. Happy to sit in. I appreciate that. Thank you. The only other thing is, I hope everybody has a safe, prosperous, and happy new year. We all need a good new year. Mr. Barrett?
Who do we call? Robin, you said? I've had a couple of those calls too, and I didn't know the number. Is that just BXSI? Is that?
It is. I'll email all the council.
Okay.
For the contact information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes, excuse me, that concludes the council reports at this time. We'll move to citizens' comments. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes.
Mr. Frisbee, you want to make any comments?
We have to have order, gentlemen. It's the last meeting of the year. We're almost done. Just tighten up. Tighten up. Stay focused. Thank you. We'll allow up to 45 minutes, three minutes per speaker. All I ask is that when you come to speak to the table, if there is anyone, just state your name clearly so the clerk can record it accurately. That being said, anybody on my left, your right. Anybody on my right, your left. Anybody in the back? Thank you. That concludes citizens' comments. We'll now move to the policy agenda. That first item A is a second reading. If the clerk would read that, please.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance, Section 1512, pertaining to compensation schedule.
Thank you. The motion was made by Mr. Lawrence, and the second was by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence, any comments?
That's on just the base. People have reached 1325. We didn't change the base. Is that not right, Jill? Didn't change the base.
1325.
Everybody who's employed gets 1325.
Press, you want to just explain the.
Same numbers we did the last time.
Mr. Guines? Any other council members have questions? Just have one. When will employees see their pay raise reflected in which check? I had that question come up.
Is it the effect on January 21st? Or is it on the 21st paycheck?
On the January 21st paycheck, and some folks may not know their grade, and I know the increases were based on the pay grades. How do I know what my raise will be if I'm an employee? It's gonna be based on the pay grade, like I said, and some folks may not know their pay grades, but they.
I think the blue sheets assigned by each director and who? Just me? Okay. Well, they're on the blue sheets. I don't know what.
Right. So, if I'm an employee, I want to know what my raise is. Where could I go find where my pay, what my pay grade is? Can I find that online? On the compensation schedule in the city ordinance? It's okay. So, there's a place online.
Subscription, right?
Find it.
They're gonna get a blue sheet handed to them.
They're gonna get a blue sheet handed to them. Okay. I don't, we don't, I don't know what a blue sheet is, but.
Not, you gotta speak up back there.
Okay. All right. They're just curious. All right, Mr. Demming, I think, had a question or comment.
Do we have a way to just add another tagline to their stubs to let them know what pay grade they're in? Just something affixed on their thing, where their address is? I know with my payroll company, I can put.
Comment on the payroll.
Yeah, comment on the payroll, paste up, something like that.
I'll have to check with the legislature to see where we attach that in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, there being none, all in favor of the ordinances presented. It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agendas, air motion. Mr. Lawrence is our second. Thank you, Mr. Gans. I was wondering about you there for a moment. You paused. All right. Thank you. All right, let me start with Mr. Barrett here in Ward 7. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Mr. Glavine, anything?
I have none.
You do have one? Go ahead.
On the, I think it's H and I, the resolution requests an assistance, the Harrison County Board of Supervisors, those two go together, correct? We're basically trying to go through the state. Can you explain that to us just exactly? I've had someone call me asking and just explain exactly what we're doing.
All right, this is, again, another cooperative effort to maximize what the legislator has been allocated of the $1.8 billion. And in talking with the Lieutenant Governor six months ago, wasn't it? About what, based on the, I guess, the allocation of $11 million that we recovered from COVID, that was sort of the maximum of that that we'd allocate in a match. Not that we got to spend that $11 million, but if we got, received $11 million, they were able to match that in water, you know, appropriate water sewer and drainage efforts. He also said that if the county puts an amount up, it would match that, too. We had $28 million worth of water sewer projects in our plans. Isn't that right, Mike? So the idea is, we'll get eight, we have $28 million of product, of projects within Harrison County, and a lot of them, well, we're all in Harrison County, but some of them were the same projects that they were planning on. So put them in together so that would reduce our position to maybe 25%.
Got you.
So basically, we're trying to maximize those, that $28 million in recovering it from that set of $1.8 billion allocated to us.
Do we know how much money Harrison County, I know-
$40 million.
Forty million, okay, thank you.
And we are 23% of Harrison County, for those who wanted to know.
Okay.
So what is, I'm trying to tell you how we got $8 million. Out of there, $40 million.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Barrett?
That's it.
Okay, I have nothing. Mr. Demming, anything? Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. Gans? Mr. Lawrence?
E is in Echo?
D.
D, Delta.
D is in Delta. Yeah, that's BBW 1 and 2. That's the next, that's the area down on the point. That's, so that's a-
That, this is item, this is item 5D? That's- This particular-
Let me see the pile.
This particular, this particular task order, if I understand it correctly, was, is to pay for an analysis report of human remains that were discovered during that infrastructure project. I think the additional cost was $3,400 for a revised contract fee because there were remains discovered earlier, you may recall, on Highway 90 in the old Biloxi Cemetery there. So that's a revised contract fee of $63,000. But if I understood this correctly, it's the additional remains that were found earlier, somewhere along the line. I don't know if I answered your question, Mr. Lawrence, you mean?
I'll get the mic working. Can you hear me? Hey, we got it working now, I believe. I pushed a little button in the back there. And I think it's working now. I got two mics. You're like a rock star. Huh? That's a good thing. And on H and I, I know what we're doing is great, but we hired somebody else to go out to that $1.8 billion, too. Is this a separate, is this the same money?
It's not. This is the same money we talked about matching up. The Recovery Act was, for us, it was $11 million, and that's what we're trying to match up. No lobbying going on. I was directed by the Secretary of State to get your projects together, ready to shovel, and that's what we did. We had $28 million, and about eight of them of the projects were shovel-ready. Easy for us to go get $11 million. The second bunch is to have those same projects onboard with the city so we could maximize, hopefully, got another eight million out of the eleven we're putting up. So this is a directive of the Secretary of State now, it has to be confirmed, that they have to sink in, the Speaker of the House, as well as the, I said Secretary of State, that was an error, the Lieutenant Governor from the Senate, Speaker of the House from the House, will confirm that they will match these projects so we can move it forward.
I understood all, I just wanted to, this is different money than what we hired somebody to do, that's why I was asking.
Right.
Right, so this is different money.
Yep.
Okay, I had no problem with that. I don't have no problem with go after all the money, any way we can get it. You know, more people without it, the better off we are. I mean, that's all we're trying to find out that part. And it's, this one's for Mike on E, like Echo?
Echo.
The hanging door guy, what do we know with that? Doors everywhere in the city? What do we do with these doors?
When you talk about overhead hanging doors, we're really talking for the most part about the Fire Department. The Fire Department has a lot of the hanging doors, and they're a constant maintenance issue. We don't have in the city guys to repair overhead doors. So we put them all under contract so that the Fire Department can call their contractor. First of all, they'll get an annual maintenance, and then they'll be able to call for repairs out of their budget to fix their overhead doors, instead of depending on Adam and his band of merry men, which is down to about three people in Public Works.
Did you do that? Did you make that move? That's a good move, I thought. Have somebody professionally do that.
This is just a continuation of-
Actually, telling you a good thing for a change, you know?
Yeah, it's a good thing.
I know you're shocking, but it was.
It is. It's a continuation of what somebody called the Demming Rule some years ago, where we find it's less expensive and more efficient to subcontract certain items of work out rather than try and do them in-house.
It's all part of the budget. There's no budget expense.
Yeah, it's built in the budget.
The last one is L. Thank you. The last one is L. I think that's a good thing. You're going to use the $200,000, you're having that fund to repair the house if it needs to be repaired, this apartment house? And then we'll do what, whatever we want after that?
That's the plan. Yeah, we want to see what repairs need to be done first, rather than having a lot of different people saying, I can do this, or it needs that, or it needs that. Let's have a professional inspector do it. We've got money to pay for it out of that maintenance fund, and then let's evaluate where the building stands.
People in the neighborhood are glad to see this happening, you know?
Let me update that. We visited, and, you know, the thing has a lot of potential for things that have been done in the past in that area, like the Miramar Garden Club and a facility for, you know, community. It really is, has a lot of potential. Peter said, the first thing we had to do is assess what it is, and then we can go after a number. There is some resources already to push it into, you know, an operational mode. I think the trust fund that was set at Peoples Bank has some money, and as well as some other, you know, architectural, historical, and I think it was built in 1927, I believe. But, you know, some of the neighbors were concerned that we're trying to sell it, and so let me say that. We're trying to utilize that as a resource in that area. Again, the thing that comes to mind that was brought to my attention was the Miramar Garden Club and some of the things that it would fit, similar to Talladino, and that's what we're trying to do. It's, has tremendous, has good bones and tremendous potential.
I think it's a good thing for this apartment house to have that being done. Another thing, we want to have an underground club and a bomb shelter in the bottom. Y'all know there's a bomb shelter down there.
Yeah.
I would have wanted to have an underground club, something like that.
Check with the Chinese and see, you know, what the possibilities are there.
Speak easy. Thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. We'll call for the question. All in favor of the consent agenda is presented. It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Any exceptions? Thank you, lady and gentleman. That brings us to code enforcement hearings. The first hearing, Robert and Lynn A. Flint, Basket, 451 Cove Drive. Last granted a 30-day extension in November, on November 23rd. Mr. Creel. Is there anyone present to speak on this matter, 451 Cove Drive? What would the next step be, Mr. Creel? I went out and looked at that property. They have a pool, it's somewhat drained, but of course, it fills with rain, water, and everything. The building's not necessarily secure. Is this moving toward demolition if something doesn't happen? And the contractor that does the work, there'll be a lien placed on the property tax. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Creel. There being no one to speak on this matter, and that hearing is closed. The next hearing, Item B, Qui and Anthony Cannard, 251 Iroquois Street, was granted a 30-day extension on November 23rd. Thank you. Is anybody here to speak on the issue of 251 Iroquois Avenue, excuse me, Iroquois Street? All right, there being no one, this hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Creel. That brings us to the routine agendas, air motion.
Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. A second by Mr. Gans. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Questions?
Mike, any scoop from last week? Walt's not here, so. Thank you.
Any other question, any questions on the routine agenda? If not, we'll call for the question. All in favor is presented, and it's approved on a 7-0 vote. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
I'd like to make that motion to adjourn in memory of Sherri Mazzara Valmuth.
All right, so it's seconded by everyone?
Yep.
It'd be Sherri Mazzara Valmuth. Thank you. All in favor of adjourning? Thank you. It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you.